March 16th, 2017, meeting of the Little Rock Planning Commission. And I want to appreciate it here on the day before St. Patty's Day. I see the green has already arrived. Donna, would you like to take a roll, please?
Chairman Berry.
Here.
Vice Chair Bubba's.
Here.
Commissioner Binham.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Dillon. Commissioner Finney. Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Leahy.
Here.
Commissioner Latour.
Here.
Commissioner Stebbins.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
You have ten members present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Donna. Do I hear an approval, a motion for the minutes? Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 2nd, 2017 meeting. Those approved signify by raising your hand. Those disapprove, unanimous. Here you go. Donna, would you proceed with the presentation of the consent agenda, please?
Little Rock Planning Commission subdivision consent agenda, March 16th, 2017. Items for consent withdrawal. Item four, file number S-1756-A, Lake Nixon Day Camp subdivision site plan review, located at 18500 Cooper Orbit Road. The applicant submitted a request dated February 27th, 2017, requesting withdrawal of this item without prejudice. Staff is supportive of the withdrawal request. Items for consent deferral. Item B, file number S-1776, Mountain Valley Preliminary Platte, located at 25616 Cantrell Road. At the request of the developer, the board of directors on March 7th, 2017, allowed a deferral of this item for 60 days to allow the developer to explore alternative options for disposal of the wastewater into the Nolan Creek. Staff recommends deferral of this item to the commission's June 8th, 2017 public hearing. Item number three, file number S-1786 Greenwood Edition Preliminary Platte, located in the 16400 block of Crystal Valley Road. The applicant submitted a request dated March 8th, 2017, requesting deferral of this item to the April 27th, 2017 public hearing. Staff is supportive of the deferral request. Item number 18, file number LA-0074 Bowman Road and Executive Center Drive Advanced Grading Variance, located on the west side of Bowman Road and Executive Center Drive. The applicant submitted a request dated March 13th, 2017, requesting deferral of this item to the April 27th, 2017 public hearing. The deferral request will require a waiver of the commission's bylaws with regard to the late deferral request. Staff is supportive of the deferral request. Item number, or items for consent approval. Item number C, file number Z-4923-R, Shackelford Crossing Lot 1, Revised Long Form PCD, located at 2618 South Shackelford Road. The applicant amended, has amended their request and is seeking to place a temporary storage module on the site from October 15th of each year to January 15th of each year for the storage of seasonal items. The applicant has also indicated they will work with staff concerning the placement and the painting of the module to a neutral color to lessen the visual impact of the module. Staff is now supportive of the applicant's request. The applicant has worked with staff to come up with a plan which lessens the time on the module and will be placed and also has agreed to paint the module. To staff's knowledge, there are no remaining outstanding technical issues. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow the placement of the temporary storage module on the site as indicated by the applicant. Item number five, file number Z-4336-QQ, Arkansas Children's Hospital zoning site plan review, located on the northwest corner of 10th and Summit Streets. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number six, file number Z-4343-II, Bank of the Ozarks Revised Long Form PCD, located on the northwest corner of Cantrell Road and Shenan Show Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the city's land alteration ordinance to allow grading of future phases with the construction grading of the first phase. Item number seven, file number Z-4343-JJ, Renaissance Point, The Ranch Revised Long Form PDR, Shenan Show Boulevard and Allied Drive. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the city's land alteration ordinance to allow grading within future phases of the development with the construction of a building in an earlier phase. Item number nine, file number Z-4743-D, Double B Store 116, Short Form PDC, located at 2406 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends any new pile on sign meet the typical development criteria for signage allowed in commercial zones or a maximum of 36 feet in height than 160 square feet in area. Staff recommends if vehicle stacking for the drive-through window creates conflicts or blocks the riverfront drive, riverfront drive driveway, the property owner must modify the site traffic plan to resolve the conflict or blockage by requiring vehicles to enter the drive-through lane from the north side of the proposed building. Item number 10, file number Z-5703-E, Lots 2 and 4, Colonel Glenn Business Center Revised Long Form PCD, located at 10303 Colonel Glenn Road. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number 12, file number Z-6734-G, 307 East Ninth Street Revised Short Form PDR, located at 307 East Ninth. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number 13, file number Z-6973-H, Lots 2 and 3, The Village at Colonel Glenn Revised Long Form PCD, located on the northwest corner of David O'Dod and Lawson Cut Off. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number 14, file number Z-7603-I, 14910 Cantrell Road Revised Long Form PCD, located at 14910 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends as a separate action, the applicant request abandonment of the access and utility usement located within the area proposed for the future building construction. Item number 15, file number Z-8998-A, MEMS Revised Short Form POD, located at 1121 West Seventh Street. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow the placement of a ground sign along West Seventh Street as proposed by the applicant. And item number 16, file number Z-9126-A, Donaghy Building Revised Short Form PCD, located at 103 East Seventh Street. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the previously approved PCD to allow change in the tenant mix of the building. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Donna. Do we hear a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I think I have a bylaw waiver first.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'd like to move for approval of bylaw waiver to defer item number 18 to the hearing on April 27th.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Those approve of the motion to waive the bylaw for this item, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Bylaw waiver passes. Now for consent agenda, please.
I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda as read with all staff recommendations and comments.
Do we hear a second? Those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, raise your hand. Those opposed? Consent agenda has been passed. If you've, if you've heard your item that was on the consent agenda, you don't have to wait around. You can go out into the evening. Certainly welcome to stay. We are, we will proceed on the regular agenda. We have another card. Donna, could you read the items on regular agenda that we will be sequencing through, please?
Item A, Triangle Properties. Item one, Gibraltar Heights. Item two, lots, lots 2A-R and 2B-R, CWC subdivision. Item eight, Huffstuddler Properties. Item 11, Track 75. Item 17, Breed. And item 19, The Medina Institute.
Thank you, Donna. That's correct. Before we get started with the first item on the regular agenda, I would like to remind those on each item of the ground rules for speaking as we have for all items on regular agenda that 20 minutes are allowed for each side. So the applicant has 20 minutes that they can use to speak to their item and those opposed have 20 minutes to share amongst themselves if there's more than just one. So with that said, let's go to item A, please.
Item A, file number Z-4051-A, Triangle Properties, Short Form PID, located at 8218 Baseline Road. The applicant is seeking a rezoning of the site from I-2 Lot Industrial District to PID, Planned Industrial Development District to add a health studio and spa as an allowable use for the property. Building is a one-story metal building, contains 6,500 gross square feet of floor area. The building contains multiple tenant bays and occupants. The parking stalls are not marked on the site plan, but the area indicates 20 parking spaces could be provided. Parking for a mixed-use development based on one space per 225 gross square feet of floor area would typically require the placement of 24 parking spaces to serve the site. Based on the current tenant mix, staff feels the parking provided is adequate. The applicant is not proposing any modifications to the existing signage plan. Each of the leased spaces of the development is allowed, or each development is allowed a single ground sign not to exceed 30 feet in height than 72 square feet in area. The applicant has not indicated a dumpster, but staff recommend if a dumpster is placed on the site that the dumpster be screened per typical ordinance standards. Also, the hours of dumpster service be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Staff is supportive of the applicant's request. The applicant is seeking approval of the rezoning to the PID to allow the addition of the health studio and spa. Staff feels a rezoning as requested is appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. And once again, staff recommends if a dumpster is placed on the site that the dumpster be screened and the, as typically required, and the dumpster service hours be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here for this item? Would you like to get up and speak? We have, we have one card here in opposition to it, so you're welcome to speak and, or hear the opposition and address the questions and concerns of this person that's opposed.
Okay. Good to know.
Okay. Be sure to state your name for the record.
Milton Keahan.
Okay. So you want to wait to hear the, the person who wants to speak against it?
Sure.
Okay. Stand by. John, is it Huglen or Hugler?
Hugler. It's wrong issue.
Oh.
That's not the gas station.
You signed up for two different items, am I correct? Did I get this wrong?
That's, that's the wrong one, correct. Another one on baseline where they're taking half of rest of parking and putting in another strip gas.
Item two. He wants, he wants to speak on item two.
I understand that, but he also has a card for.
Item eight.
A.
Eight.
I have for seven, 4051A.
Mr. Hugler, is it the Huffstudd, is it the, the equipment company that's across the street?
But there's also the one to put a mini-marked gas station in on baseline road right there with Shell and the liquor store.
It's two and eight.
Okay. All right then. I'm sorry. That is just, um, so we need to go ahead and vote on item A. I apologize, a misindex of the, the item number. Thank you. Do we hear a motion on item A, please?
Yes. I move.
I move for the approval of item A with all staff recommendations and comments.
Second. Those approve of the motion to approve this application, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Commissioner Latour, were you? Okay. Glad you're here with us. That was unanimous. Thank you. Apologize for the miscue.
Sorry about that.
Item one?
Item one, file number S-309-E, Gibraltar Heights Edition, Replat Lots 9 and 10 Block 3, Location 422 Gamble Road. The applicant is requesting a replat of lots 9 and 10 Block 3 Gibraltar Heights addition to the city of Little Rock. The lots are currently platted as east-west lots fronting onto Gamble Road. The applicant is requesting to replat the lots to front on Archer Lane. The lots are proposed with a lot width of 65 feet. The lot depth proposed is 95 feet. The plat indicates the placement of a 14.9-foot plated building line to align with the front of the existing home located on Lot 9R. A 20-foot front building setback is proposed for Lot 10R. Staff is supportive of the applicant's request. Based on the previous right-of-way dedications, the depth of lots currently 95 feet. Staff feels a reef plat as proposed is appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from Section 31232 and 31256 to allow reduced lot depth and a reduced plated building lines as proposed.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant for this item number one, please? Would you like to speak or just wait to hear the questions, concerns of those who had submitted a card against?
Sure. She can go ahead.
Okay. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Sammy Chung.
Sammy Chung. Thank you. Stand by and then I'll call these out. Matt Carmen?
Hello? Matthew Carmen.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, it's a single-family resident community there on Gamble Road. And what he wants to do is take a lot and put possibly two houses on it, on just a single lot. And that's just going to start a domino effect for the rest of the area down Gamble Road. Because there's a lot of area, wooded area there that's just going to open the door for other people to come in to do duplexes, triplexes, apartments and everything else. And that, that piece of property is right behind a gentleman that's here now and myself, and he's just going to just clutter that lot with whatever he's going to do. That house has been sitting there for probably 50 years. For him to take the house down and build another house, it's going to oppose that, but to build another house right beside it, got a problem with it.
Thank you for your comments. Samuel Scalen?
Samuel Scalenji. The item before us would potentially demise the safety of my children and would potentially accrue issues of drainage, erosion, and I think it would bring down the value of our property if it is a multifamily sector. Single-family, I'm all about it. I'm good. Everybody that lives around the area own the home. There's no renters. There's no issues of renting properties. But if there were to be another property there, I would like to have privacy for my property and possibly a retention wall to alleviate any, any type of erosion that would possibly be there. But as far as rezoning it to be multifamily, I think it would bring down the value of my home.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Applicant, would you like to get up and speak to your application and any of the questions and concerns just raised?
Only thing I really want to do is just make, just make a home there. That's it. Not trying to do, I'm not trying to create a multi-unit house. I'm trying to make just a, just a regular home. That's it. Just to rent out property. That is what I want to do. That's, I have no, nothing else.
Okay. Commissioners?
Question. Are you planning on building a home? Are you planning on building a home on this other vacant lot, 10R? Are you going to build a home on it? Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, just a clarification. It is a single-family? Okay, so just one single-family? Okay, because there was, there was assertion that potentially multifamily.
One single-family.
Okay.
No multi-unit, no doubt.
Got you.
Any other commissioners? Do we hear a motion?
Would like to make a motion to approve item one with all staff recommendations and comments.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded. Those approve of the application and staff recommendations, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Application passes unanimously. Okay. Item number two.
Item number two, file number S-1056-B, Lots 2A-R and 2B-R, CWC subdivision replat and subdivision site plan review, located at 10011 Interstate 30. The application is a two-part request. The applicant is seeking a replat of an existing plated lot located in, within the CWC subdivision and to allow site plan review for construction of future Murphy USA convenience store with a detached canopy over the gas, proposed gas pumps and to allow continued use of the restaurant on Lot 2A-R. The applicant has worked with public works staff concerning the driveway location and circulation on the site with the redevelopment of Lot 2B-R. The driveway apron on baseline road will be constructed to align with the driveway serving Walmart on the south side of baseline. Included in staff's recommendation is the owner is responsible for the required traffic signal modifications, including intersection improvements for better pedestrian access. A detailed traffic signal plan must be provided to city traffic engineering staff to review and approve prior to the issuance of a building permit. Murphy USA proposes to lease the southern portion of the site of the newly-created lot, Lot 2B-R, along baseline road for the convenience store. Murphy USA will have a ground lease on the proposed lot. The existing restaurant and associated parking will be located on proposed Lot 2A-R. The existing restaurant contains 8,217 gross square feet of floor area and 77 parking spaces. Typically, parking for a restaurant is 1 to 100 of gross square feet floor area, so 82 parking spaces would typically be required to serve the restaurant. As noted, there are only 77 spaces, so the applicant is seeking a variance to allow their parking as indicated on the site plan. Along the, along with the replat request, the applicant is seeking approval of the site plan review to allow the convenience store development. The building is proposed containing 1,200 gross square feet of floor area. The fuel canopy is proposed 201 feet long, covering six double-sided fuel pumps. The frontage along baseline road is indicated with a minimum setback of 45 feet, which is the plated building line. And the plan indicates a 50-foot side yard setback on the eastern, western perimeters, 50-foot rear yard. The convenience store is indicated with 10 parking spaces along baseline, which meets the typical minimum ordinance requirements. Building signage is proposed over the front door of the restaurant along the building's northern and southern facades. Building signage located over the front and the western facade, and the southern facade are indicated without public street frontage, but are included, but will be limited to a maximum of 10% of the facade area on each of these sides. Canopy signage is proposed on the north and southern elevations, assigned locations. On the northern facade is located without street, street frontage. The canopy logo is proposed with 24 square feet in area. The medium, the, yeah, the canopy price signs contains 29.05 square feet and 17.54 square feet. The signs on the north and south elevations are indicated to comply. The plan indicates two pile on signs. The signs are indicated with a maximum height of 36 feet, maximum sign area of 160. Each of the future tenants will advertise on each sign. One is located along baseline and the other is located along the I-30 Frontage Road. Staff is supportive of the applicant's request. The applicant is seeking approval of the replat and the subdivision site plan review for building placement on one of the newly-created lots and to allow the continued use of the second lot as a restaurant. Staff feels that the request is appropriate and based on them working with staff and the, the alignment and circulation, staff does not feel there will be a problem with access and circulation on the site. Staff recommends approval of the request. Subject compliance with the comments and conditions is outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda Staff Report. Staff recommends that the parking is proposed on Lot 2B-R. And staff recommends the owner be responsible for the traffic, required traffic signal modifications, including intersection improvements for better pedestrian access. And staff recommends that the detailed traffic signal plan be provided to city traffic engineering for staff review prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you. Can we have the applicant here? We, we have two cards in opposition. You're welcome to, to state your application and wait and hear what the other opposing are.
I will do so now, sir.
You want to do that right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Wayne Gibson with Murphy USA. Our address is 200 Peach Street, Eldorado, Arkansas. Along with me, Mr. Brian Dale with White Data, engineer of record for this project, and also Mr. Ernie Peters, traffic engineer. Again, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be back before you once again. We've done a few sites here in Little Rock and across the river, and we're looking to do one other one at I-30 and baseline. We appreciate the help that we've gotten from staff to get us to this point. And, you know, we, we look for areas that are conducive to development. Traffic, of course, is one of the key, key factors in what we're looking for. And we, you know, look for the, where the big box retailers are. And, you know, traffic is, is a key. You know, one, one important item, I think that was, may have been missed. The, the way that we are aligning this site, it will line up with the Walmart drive. And as was Ms. James mentioned, new traffic signal and all, we will be put, put there. So there is a, a good alignment there. But again, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here. Open to any questions that you may have concerning Murphy. As far as the engineering aspects, Mr. Dale would be able to address those, any traffic concerns. Mr. Peters can answer those as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. John Huglen, is that correct? Hugler. Hugler, I'm sorry. Senior moment.
Yeah. I have them every day. My name's John Hugler, and my contention on this is that's nowhere near big enough for what they're wanting to put in. They're going to have more than one, one grade of fuel, so they got to bury tanks in here also. There's not going to be a lot of room for tractor-trailer traffic. I kind of like the idea of maybe a traffic signal because somebody just got killed there a month ago walking. But that's going to be a four-way intersection next to the longest light in Little Rock, probably, which is baseline. I mean, it takes forever to get through there. You go through at rush hour, you're backed up past this to get to baseline and I-30. And it just really, to me, it doesn't figure out that they're going to fit all this in that one spot unless they're going to build on top of gas tanks because there'll probably be four of those buried. You have to have your filler sites, you have to have your fuel check sites. All this stuff has got to be cluttered around the tanks. And they're wanting to take half a Dixie Cafe's parking lot and, and just build kind of sideways right there on baseline. If they want it, they need to take the whole lot. That's all I got to say on this one.
Thank you. I have, I'm sorry, I can't read, name of it, Walter?
Wadiya Masood.
Wadiya Masood.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Wadiya Masood. I'm here on behalf of Pam Adcock, Southwest. Oops, she's ill, so she wasn't able to come in. And I guess on my behalf too. Southwest Little Rock met on March 6th to hear the presentation given by Mr. Brian Dale. After a lengthy presentation and questions, a vote was taken by members present. The vote was tie. Yes, the vote, yes, the voters felt that bringing the gas, Murphy USA in the area would bring better gas prices. Competition between Murphy USA and Shell, which is separate by another property. They also liked the idea of being, the idea of driveway being moved and aligned with the Walmart driveway and signal light, which we have requested that for years. The voters stressed the area commercial nude is too congested already. Traffic accidents at the location is numerous now. The turn into the proposed gas station right, let's see, right, would cause a lot of traffic backup. Therefore, the stack would occur. All of them felt the proposed station property is too small for the development, given that in all. given that in all likelihood, another restaurant would open enclosed Dixie Cafe. Parking lot would not be sufficient, even though it meets the minimum standards. Also having to turn through most likely people will cut through the gas station pump area. On my behalf, you know, I think what trying to say is basically is the way the setup between the Dixie Cafe is currently, there is an entrance off Baseline. And there's also one that's off I-30 service road. So with the Murphy USA proposing to take up almost about three-quarters of the parking lot that's going to be taken, I think we understood from Mr. Brian Dale at the meeting, that it's going to be taken roughly around 20 to 30 parking lots from, currently from the Dixie Cafe. That's more in front of the Dixie Cafe. So if someone were to come in in the future, hopefully someone would come in in the future to lease that Dixie Cafe. The potentials of it being leased out would be really difficult because the, there would have, there would be two entrances. One would be off Baseline. They would have to loop around the current or the new proposed gas station pumps, loop around the traffic over the pumps, the canopy, the congestion, congestion of that parking entrance. Or they would have to use the I-30 service road entrance to enter off Dixie Cafe. I think it's just going to be also, you know, just too congested for that area. I think we've got that Popeyes that just went in across the street, which is great. But also bringing, it's negative part is bringing more traffic on that corner along with the Walmart. There's a Shell station, I mean, literally a few hundred feet away on that same side where the proposed Murphy USA is going in. Just going to be more congested by the time you get from that light from the Walmart to the next stoplight, which is right by the service road. It turns red, then it turns green. I mean, it's just so quick, it's just going to congest the traffics, you know, especially at rush hours. And with the new proposed Murphy USA, I can imagine it's going to be tremendous of traffic going in and out of there. You know, that's excluding any future restaurant coming into the Dixie Cafe, which would cause more traffic coming in and out of that traffic, light in front of the Walmart. I think that should be it.
Thank you for your comments. Would the applicant like to come and address those questions and concerns?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the first question that the gentleman brought up as far as getting the truck on and off of the property, that's one of the very first things we have to do in our design on how to safely get that transport truck on and off of the site. We have 1,402 sites over 26 states. And getting the truck on, getting water off of the site, as I said, are two of the primary things that we have to do. And if the site were not safe for customers to get on and for the gasoline tanker to get on and all, we wouldn't have sat down on, on the site at all. The, the other issue was the site is too small. The site is 1.07 acres, the total acreage of the entire parcel, 2.83 acres. Mr. Dale can address the parking issues. Those have been resolved. There, there's ample parking on the site and Mr. Dale can, can address those issues.
When you look at this, good evening, Brian Dale, White Data. When you look at the site overall, there's 88 parking spaces total. That's enough to serve both developments. But there is going to be 77 parking spots on the restaurant side or Lot 2A-R. There's 11 parking spots on Lot 2B-R, the Murphy site. Murphy is sharing those spaces with whoever the tenant will be on Lot 2A-R. And at this time, they don't know if it'll be a restaurant that goes back in there. We were trying to prepare for the worst-case scenario, which would be a restaurant user. But overall, there's, there's 88 parking spots for the entire parcel when only 86 are required.
Mr. Ernie Peters is here as well. He's traffic engineer and he'd like to address the, the traffic issue.
Sure. Mr. Peters?
Chairman, very, and commissioners, I'm Ernie Peters with Peters and Associates Engineers. We did a traffic study related to the site. We took into account what is proposed by Murphy USA. We also took into account that there would be a future use on the restaurant site. We assumed a high turnover sit-down restaurant similar to the Dixie Cafe that was in that location previously. This is an improvement to access to the site, whether it be served just for the restaurant site or for both the restaurant and Murphy USA. Because with the alignment of the driveway across from the traffic signal at Walmart, it allows the closure of the driveway that is offset to the west and causes some degree of congestion currently because of that, that offset. So we believe this is a considerable improvement. The traffic signal, according to our analysis, will function very well with the additional traffic on the north side. The signal installation is about 10 or 12 years old. It will be upgraded. It will be improved to provide additional pedestrian crossings at this location. Currently, there's only crossings on two of the legs. We'll be crossing all four. We'll be making improvements on the Walmart side too, to take out that diverter island that separates the left and right turns to allow movement straight across from north to south and south to north. The left turn lanes line up, the three lanes line up at the driveway. It should function quite well. And as Mr. Gibson and Mr. Dale have indicated, they have allowed for the access, both ingress and egress of the transport trucks. And I believe that's highlighted in the gray on this graphic that you see here. So they can't easily move through the site. I'd be glad to address any particular questions that any of the commissioners may have concerning the analysis. We have reviewed the analysis with the city traffic engineering staff and they're comfortable with the analysis results and are okay with supporting the site as proposed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Just from a traffic standpoint, curious the distance, the new traffic signalization there at the Baseline Walmart exit entry and the traffic signal there at Baseline and the I-30 frontage. What, what's that distance?
It's about 800 feet, which is an appropriate spacing for traffic signals. Of course, the, the I-30 location with frontage roads is a much higher volume intersection than this one to the east. But they're both actuated equipment and the, the equipment will be upgraded as well as part of the modifications to the signal.
Commissioner Leahy?
This is for the staff. Is any on that signal light, the new signal light in Baseline Road, do you put any turn lanes on Baseline Road adding on there for stacking in case they can't get in? Maybe I'm asking the wrong people, maybe I'll ask Mr. Peters.
Mike says it's the same as it is today on Baseline.
Mr. Hood's correct that it is the same as what it is today. There's presently a center-left turn lane that currently only is functional at the signalized intersection serving Walmart for the westbound to southbound left turns. The pavement markings will be modified with the relocation of the drive to line up with Walmart. And that center-left turn lane will serve left turns, both eastbound and westbound. Eastbound to northbound into the site and westbound to southbound into Walmart.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
My comment on this would be that with lining it up, I would agree with your engineer here, that lining it up, and I guess also with staff, that having that signalized there where that entrance is right there at the signal is much better than it being offset. And that safety concern, to me, is what makes, should support this issue. The fact that the amount of traffic or the amount of the volume, if you have a high-volume restaurant that's on almost 3 acres, you could see that there could be a potential for a lot of traffic. If it was torn down and another development comes in, it's a lot of potential for a lot of traffic. Unless that is moved, we, to me, that's, that is the key issue there is moving that to where it lines up with the light. For that reason, I'll be supporting it.
Any other commissioners? Okay. We're ready to hear a motion? Yes.
I move for the approval of item two with all staff recommendations and comments.
Those approve of the, can I hear a second? Okay. Motion's been made second to approve the application with staff recommendations. Those approve, so raise your hand if you approve. Those oppose, raise your hand. Application passes 10 to 0. Item eight.
Item, item number eight, file number Z-4635-D, Hufsteller Properties Revise Longform PCD, located at 10-600 Interstate 30. Ordinance number 21171 adopted by the board on February 2nd, 2016. Rezone the site from C3 to PCD to add equipment sales and services and allowable use for the site. The site plan included areas of outdoor storage and display of equipment, which was to be placed on a limestone surface within the 45-foot building setback. Two buildings were proposed. The approval included signage is allowed in commercial zones or, or a pylon signs with a maximum height of 36 feet and maximum sign area of 160 square feet in area. Also, building signage was approved to be placed on the facades with street frontage, which would be the northern, western, and southern facades. The applicant is seeking approval of a revision to the previously approved signage plan to allow the placement of a wall sign on the east side, east facade of the building, which is located without public street frontage. And the applicant is proposing to place a pylon sign, sign along the frontage road, which exceeds the 36-foot height, which typically is allowed in commercial zones. The wall signage along the east facade, facade will be limited to 10% of the facade area. So to allow the placement of the sign on the east facade, the applicant is foregoing the placement of signage on the northern and western facades. Only allow the placement of wall signs on the southern as well as the eastern side. The applicant also is requesting the placement of the pylon sign along the I-30 frontage road. The proposed, the sign is proposed 45 feet in height and 296 square feet in area. As noted, the maximum sign, signage typically allowed within the commercial zones is 36 feet in height with a maximum area of 160. The ordinance also allows the placement of a pylon sign every 150 linear feet of street frontage on the property. The applicant has committed to eliminating any other pylon signs on the site. Only be allowed the placement of the pylon on Baseline Road to allow the additional height and the additional area. Staff is supportive of the applicant's request. The applicant is seeking approval to allow the placement of the wall sign as well as the pylon sign. Staff feels the signage plan is proposed is, is a reasonable request with the elimination of the other signs, which would typically be allowed. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow the placement of the wall sign on the east facade and allow the placement of the pylon sign on the I-30 frontage road, which will not exceed 45 feet in height and 296 square feet in area.
Thank you. Applicant is present, Mr. McGetrick. Would you like to speak to the application or here we have one card in opposition?
I'll just wait and hear what the opposition has to say and speak at that time.
Okay.
That's right. Thank you.
All righty. John Hugler, please.
My name's John Hugler. Originally, you know, we didn't have a problem with the striping going in. They're going to clean the lot up and this and that. But now they've doubled the size of their installation. They are going all the way from Frontier Diner to Childers Road. And they're going to take four houses out in this move. They want bigger signs. I mean, they're going to have the biggest signs they got anywhere. They're going to have a line of track holes out there. That's what people will be looking at. Keep the signs small. We got enough signs on this I-30 and Baseline. We got that great big one already there. And once in, they don't ever come down. Like, like you said, this one's a little bit high. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGetrick?
We're not doubling the size of the project. Although they did buy the property to the east, it is not included as far as any development on that property at this time. The property we're working on will remain there. We are reducing, well, we cleared off all the, we are going to clear the four houses out of there on the property to the east that they bought. We took out a old, I guess it used to be Jimmy Doall Country Club or whatever out there, country. But that was a long time ago. But we are taking that coming out and that strip somewhere along the front is coming out. We would take that billboard out that's up front, but that was in a lease that has seven years remaining prior to us buying that property. So that billboard's going to have to remain. And that's one of the reasons we're asking for a bigger sign on our frontage, trying to get over that billboard as much as we can. We have agreed with staff that there won't be any pylon signs on Baseline, on Childers, and no additional signs on the access road. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you all might have on it.
Commissioners? Commissioner Leahy?
I heard someone say something about taking out Frontier Diner. And I was by there today and my wife asked me, where did it go? And I don't know. Did you take it out?
No, it's going to stay there. I had lunch there today. No, it is going to stay. We're not touching Frontier Diner. It's adjoining us, so we're not touching it. I don't want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners, questions, comments? Let me hear a motion.
I move for approval of item eight with all of staff's recommendations and comments.
Motion is second for item eight to be approved. Those approve of the motion to approve item eight, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Item passes 10 to 0. Item 11.
Item 11, file number Z-5936-O, Track 75, Cheneau Valley Longform PDR, located on the northwest corner of Chappanel Drive and Rawling Road. Ordinance number 20296 adopted by the Board of Directors on August 2nd, 2010. Rezone the site from O2 Office and Institutional to POD Planned Office Development to allow the site to develop with an office development containing 14 lots. The project contains 7.9 acres. The lots were proposed to range in size from .44 acres to .76 acres. The average lot size proposed was .45 acres. The development contained two new public streets totaling 500 linear feet. The development did not occur and the POD zoning approval has expired. The request, current request is a rezoning of the site from POD to PDR Planned Development Residential to allow the development of 130 units of age restricted, 55-plus years of age, independent living. The development is proposed with studio one, two, and three-bedroom units. The site plan includes the development of a central building with two wings connecting the main building. The wing buildings are proposed as three-story buildings with a maximum height of 43 feet. Center section of the building is proposed with a maximum building height of 48 feet, which will include architectural embellishments and features. The development is proposed with 165 parking spaces to serve the residents and staff. The plan notes a few of the parking spaces will be covered or garages will be added to the site. The applicant has indicated the covered parking or garages will be located along the site's northern and western perimeters. Maximum height of the garage is 25 feet. Along the site's western perimeter, there's a 100-foot open space zone tract included within the development. Adjacent to the open space zoning is a 50-foot undisturbed buffer. The site plan indicates areas in which trees and existing vegetation will be retained along Chappanel Drive. The plan indicates adjacent to the central building an outdoor patio and garden area. The applicant indicates amenities offered to the residents include car and bus service. Development also includes live-in management, 24/7 professional staff, concierge service, free scheduled transportation, full-service dining, three meals per day will be provided, weekly housekeeping. And the applicant indicates the developer will follow the federal guidelines for resident communities with age restricted to 55-plus residents. A single development sign is proposed at the driveway entrance. The sign is proposed with a maximum height of six feet and maximum sign area of 24 square feet. Building signage as allowed in multifamily zones or maximum 10% of the facade abutting the public street will be placed. Staff is supportive of the applicant's request. The development is proposed as senior living facility. The site plan respects previously approved buffers along the western perimeters. And staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D-E and F of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you. Before I call the applicant up, I want to remind everyone again, the protocol, each side has 20. side has twenty minutes. I'd like you to respect that. Uh, there are several cards in opposition to this, obviously, and, uh, once you've, uh, been called up, unlikely to be called on again. So, speak your mind, please, and, but if you, uh, if your name is called and some folks before you have already covered their points and you don't want to speak, you're certainly allowed not to. So, with that in mind, let's hear from the applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Bezinski, Ms. James, Mr. Overton. My name is Bill Spivey. I'm an attorney with Wright, Lindsay &amp; Jennings, and I appear before you today on behalf of the applicant, Deltic Timber Corporation. I'm accompanied by Mr. Tim Daters, Wright Daters Engineers, the project engineer, Mr. Bob Lewis, who is Director of Development of Cameron Construction, the Division of Resort Lifestyle Communities, the developer and operator of the proposed senior living facility, and Mr. Ernie Peters of Peters &amp; Associates. Before yielding the microphone to Mr. Daters, who will describe the proposed project to you and who will in turn introduce Mr. Lewis and Mr. Peters, let me first acknowledge what Mrs., what Ms. James has already told you, and that is that the property, which is the subject of today's discussion, has been before this body before. But just for clarification, back in two thousand and eight, the city approved rezonings that created both open space buffers and commercial zoning adjacent to and across Chappanel Boulevard from this site. However, those actions did not change the zoning for this site before you today. As, again, as Ms. James said, in August of two thousand and ten, the city approved a POD on this site, which was not developed and which expired, but has not been expressly revoked. I think that's right. Thank you. The underlying zoning for this site has been and remains O two. The proposal before you today would create a planned residential development, or PRD, consisting of a hundred and thirty units of age-restricted, independent, senior housing together with amenities, which Deltic will demonstrate. Today constitutes both a far less intensive use of this property than was contemplated when the POD was approved in two thousand and ten, or that which might be developed by Wright in the underlying O two zone, and which also will be an excellent transition use between the commercial and office tracks on either side of Chappanel and lower Rawling adjacent to this site. Also wish to reserve a few minutes of our time following the comments of anyone who may speak in opposition to this proposal for response and to respond to your questions with any. Now, I'm gonna give you Mr. Daters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daters.
Chairman Barry, commissioners, my name's Tim Daters. I'm a consultant engineer with Wright Daters &amp; Associates. Walter, can you pull that first slide up? We've, in an attempt to kind of give you some orientation on the site, uh, colored there in green and brown and gray is the actual site itself. This is called Track seventy-five in Cheneau Valley. Uh, the road to the south of the site is Chappanel. The road on the east of the side is Rawling Road. Immediately north of this site is the floodway for Rock Creek. Uh, in this area, the floodway width has got a width of approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, south of the site, in fact, if you want to go to the next slide, Walter, this is a little bit larger enlargement of it. South of the site is the, uh, park along Chappanel. Uh, to the west of the, this development is the subdivision of Witry. Uh, it's, again, is separated from Witry by a hundred and fifty feet of open space. A hundred feet of that open space is in a tract zoned OS which Deltic will retain ownership of. The fifty feet of that hundred and fifty-foot wide open space is a part of this development and will remain open space and undisturbed with this development plan. Walter, can you go to the next slide? This is our actual PRD submittal. You can see the parking areas along, uh, Chappanel. We have two driveways onto Chappanel. There's a portico chair in the front of the building. Uh, residents, when they return, drop their cars at the portico chair, enter into the building, and their car is then parked by valet. Uh, the entrance to the building is limited through the main, uh, portico chair. There are entrances on the ends of the wings for emergencies, et cetera, and there are also exits out the back to where there is a patio and garden area. On the northern portion of the site, adjacent to the buffer, uh, we've, we've moved the garages to that location to help buffer, uh, the site from the subdivision to the west. Uh, in addition to the garages and between the garages, we're gonna go ahead and landscape and construct fencing between the garages to complete the buffer along that area. Uh, in addition to the buffer areas shown on this, we're also able to maintain and preserve the trees in the south, be the western extreme corner of the project, uh, adjacent to, uh, Chappanel. Walter, can you show them the area? There's, there's our landscape plan. So, you see, along Chappanel, we're also able to save some trees on the western portion. Uh, on the eastern portion of the side adjacent to Rawling, that's a low area. We're not gonna need to work in that area. We are gonna come in with some cypress and some other trees that, that get along well with the wet conditions and, and improve the plantings in that area. Walter, can you go to the next slide then? This is a rendering of, of not this project, but a similar project that shows the architectural style of the building. Uh, the building contains a lot of masonry brick on the lower two levels. There are, uh, sections of the building which are a masonry siding for accents. Uh, it'll be in keeping with the general motif of Cheneau Valley. Uh, there, there are steeply pitched roofs with architectural elements on the roofs in terms of the, uh, the vents and the louvers on the roof itself. I could go back one, Walter, one more. Uh, with me also is, is Bob Lewis with Resort Lifestyle Communities, and Bob is the most familiar with the actual operation and the construction of these projects, and I'd like him to further explain what happens as these projects are built and developed.
Thank you, Mr. Daters. Hi. Please state your name.
Yes, uh, good afternoon. My name is Bob Lewis with, uh, Cameron General Contractors. Uh, wanted to just spend a few minutes and go over our program if I could. First off, I wanted to make sure, uh, everyone was understanding the relationship. Uh, Cameron General Contractors is the developer and builder, and Resort Lifestyle Communities operates our communities. They are under the same ownership, so we are the build, developer, builder, and owner of these communities. We currently own and operate fourteen around the United States with another twenty under development. This is a senior independent living community. Uh, it is a hundred and thirty units. That is our typical building. Uh, is made up of two wings, as Tim showed you, of senior living apartments, and then the center, center area is our commons area. We offer, uh, full dining, three meals a day in there. We have a theater in that location. We also have a billiard room, a library, and some other amenities typical to senior living. We do offer, as was listed out, valet parking. We have a shuttle bus, full-time, uh, concierge service. So, this again is a high-end resort lifestyle living for seniors. With that, I'll tell you a little bit about the makeup of the community once it's up and operational. What I can tell you today, in the fourteen communities we operate around the United States, the average age is eighty years old. We don't even advertise to people under seventy-five because that's not, people younger than that don't move into this type of community. It's usually someone who has lost the ability to drive or is, uh, lost a spouse or is lonely that moves into these communities. So, again, the average age is eighty, eighty years old. Fifty percent of our residents don't drive or own a car. Uh, our average occupancy for a hundred and thirty units is right around a hundred and sixty-five residents in our hundred and thirty units. It is made up of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and then we have four three-bedroom units. The average stay in our, uh, developments is seven years. I did bring, uh, and I apologize, I only had two, but I'm gonna hand one out at each end here. And with that, I'm gonna turn this back over. I think we're gonna go with, uh, Tim again. Yeah.
Can you go to the next slide, Walter? We asked Ernie to look at the projected traffic that would be generated by this facility, and I'll let Ernie just explain that. Thanks, man.
If we could zoom into the upper part, the colored part of the chart there, it'd be helpful. We did at Tim's request, look at, uh, this development in two ways. One, uh, consistent with the previously approved POD with the, the office park, and then comparatively for the development as proposed. And the upper portion of this chart indicates the results of the calculation of, of vehicle trips associated with the development as it had previously been approved, and then the center portion is as it's now proposed. As you can see on this chart with the, the development as it had previously been approved for office use, it will like, would likely have generated about thirteen hundred and forty-four vehicle trips per day, hundred and twelve of those during the AM peak hour and hundred and forty-four during the PM peak hour, coinciding with the typical adjacent street AM and PM peak hours. Comparatively for the senior housing, uh, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation data, similar to what we did also for the office component, and, uh, the results of that is that for the hundred and thirty units as proposed, that it could be expected on a daily basis to generate a total of four hundred and seventy-eight trips, that's counting in and out, with only twenty-nine of those during the AM and thirty-five of those during the PM peak hour. So, a significant reduction when you compare the two uses. Uh, I was provided, um, data that was, uh, interesting from the developer after we had done our calculations as to what, uh, their facilities actually generate and not just using the ITE trip generation values, and within a, uh, vehicle or two, they were almost identical to our twenty-nine entering, uh, or entering and exiting during the AM peak hour and the thirty-five entering and exiting in the PM peak hour. So, we believe these numbers are realistic, and so it's a significant reduction from what had been proposed. We don't see any traffic issues associated with the development as proposed. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Um, applicant, anymore you would wish to?
We, we're happy to answer any questions at this stage that the commission may have. Otherwise, we'll reserve our time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will proceed to the cards that were submitted, uh, from the neighborhood, and first up to bat is Sarah Beth McReynolds. She is out of uniform without her T-shirt, but, uh...
Commissioners, if you don't mind passing one of these around. Back page of it is the agreement that was made between Witry.
If you don't mind speaking for the, we can get that.
And Deltic Timber, um, in two thousand and eight, the back page is the proposal that is present. Uh, let me start by telling you my name is Sarah Beth McReynolds. I am going to ask those opposing this, can you please stand up? All right, I'm here to give a brief history. My husband and I, Kevin, were the first family to reside at Seven Witry Court in two thousand and three. Prior to the purchase of this home, we inquired as to what the plan was to be for our future backyard. We were told that there would be some type of water feature due to this land dropping off so quickly and being so low. Around two thousand and eight, we discovered that Keith Richardson was planning to build apartments budding up to our neighborhood park and pool on Chappanel and across the street from Witry Court. This proposal failed. We then discovered that the property behind our home on Seven Witry had different intentions than the water feature which we were originally told. Along the same time, there were several changes occurring, so my memory may not have it in exact order. Along, uh, the street that had been closed by the park and pool was, uh, in the process of being opened. This creating a concern for safety and our children due to more traffic. It was also at that point that our neighborhood started discussions with Cheneau Properties and Deltic Timber. This dialogue led Witry Court into an agreement with Deltic Timber on May of two thousand and eight, which is the first page of what you guys have. I am not a zoning expert. It can be very confusing to me. With this said, I know that my husband and I remember what was agreed upon for Witry Court by Deltic Timber in two thousand and eight. We had no reason to believe this would be anything different. Please see page one displaying the Chappanel Office Village that was planned and agreed upon by Witry Court. Also, in the reached agreement, we gained a hundred and fifty-foot buffer between homes number one, number three, number seven, and number twelve, Witry Court backyards. We also received twenty-five thousand dollars from Cheneau for the purpose of building a privacy gate in the front entrance of Witry. Speed tables were installed to slow down traffic around the neighborhood, pool, and park, and it was also our understanding that Cheneau was to plant trees on the cleared office space behind us to help with the erosion. Kevin and I moved from this property in two thousand and eleven, so we do not have an investment in Witry any longer. We continue to have an emotional tie with this street in that it was our first, first home together, and lots of memories made there with our five children. Kevin owned two previous properties in Cheneau prior to Witry. We have positive feelings regarding the negotiations that took place in two thousand and eight, but on the flip side of this, we have negative feelings about initially being told it would be one thing and the realization of it being something very different. This pushed us into moving out of Cheneau after many years of home ownership. Twenty, I think, in fact, of all Kevin's totals. If you look at what is being proposed now, it looks very different than what the proposal and the agreement in two thousand and eight was. I'm very hopeful that you will take into consideration the Witry property owners' investments. I urge Cheneau and Deltic Timber to negotiate with the neighborhood towards something that can be compatible for the families that made Cheneau and any growth that might be in its future. Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McReynolds. Madre Hill? What's that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go down the list here, okay? It just, if you, if you don't want to speak, just, just tell me, okay? But Jennifer Hill? You're, you're Madre? Okay. Okay. Okay.
I appreciate it. My name is Madre Hill. I'm speaking on regarding Track seventy-five, and I am opposed. You know, first of all, I would like to say thank you for your time. This is a very important matter simply because it's basically a legal matter. We're standing before you simply because there is a signed contract that's in place. They wish to breach the contract. I've been dealing with contracts since I was eighteen years old, with the first one being signed with the University of Arkansas, and the one thing about contracts, the devil's in the details. Uh, they're stating that the fact that, that the, the facts that there are, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the facts that there, that, that, excuse me, I got sidetracked, I'm sorry. But the facts that they are, uh, building a retirement community. Well, there's a lot of different facts in that reality, uh, retirement community that's not being stated. First of all, it can be appealed, it can appeal to anybody fifty-five years of age and up. They're like to say the average age is eighty, but I am the legal guardian of my father who had a stroke at fifty-four, and he's sixty-one years old now, and I can actually, as the caretaker of him, take my four kids, move in there with him, with kids of age of four, nine, six, and thirteen. And twenty percent of this retirement community, as they're calling it, can be open to any age. So, the devil's in the details that's not really being discussed. There's a lot of different factors here, and another factor that's extremely important is that in two thousand and eight, there is a legal signed contract. Now, in the contract, it says southwest, but what is not being stated is that there was nothing but land past Witry. So, all of that back there was southwest. Now, what they have done is they have put a road in there and sectioned it off as they choose. Now, that's switching bait. That's legally fraud. So, there's a lot of different factors in here. I have, I have talked to my legal counsel regarding this, and there's trails dating I have, I have talked to my legal counsel regarding this and there's trails dating back to when Ms. McReynolds stood right here in front of you in two thousand eight, that there was agreement in place from the fact that there was twenty-five thousand dollars given for the gate to this present moment. And now what we're saying is things have expired. Well, as you read the contract, there was no expiration regarding this. Even on their webpage, if you go on there and looked today, it's noted as office space. And there was agreement between Witry Court and Deltec Timber for quiet office space. Now, the most important thing is that the quiet office space was agreed upon between Witry and, and Deltec Timber to be compatible. So now they're taking the agreement of which they agreed to and now trying to turn it into multifamily. Well, would it be incompatible? There's a lot of conflicts there. First of all, you got privacy issues. You have, first of all, we're not trying to take the fact that they have ownership of the land. We know they have ownership of the land. We know that there's gonna be something built there. We welcome that. We just ask that the original agreement be withheld. That's all we have, that's all we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Jennifer Hill?
I don't really have anything to say. I just stand with my friends and neighbors and I oppose this event.
Terry Winter?
Winkler.
Winkler, I'm sorry.
Yes, I also don't want to speak, but I'm staying with my.
Thank you. Kyla Acock?
I'd like to speak, please.
You bet. Keep in mind, we have three more cards after you with, how many minutes? Twelve?
Okay, thank you. My name is Kyla Acock. My husband, Tony, and I are parents of three boys, eight, six, and one-year-old. We live at three Witry Court and the proposed high-rise apartment complex will be right behind our house. I'm a mom and I'm worried about my precious boy's safety. It is my job to protect them. I worry not only about my children, but also the other eighteen children, the majority of which are twelve and under, who live on our street. I care about our home, but our children are the main reason I stand before you today and oppose the rezoning of Track Seventy-Five. I want to second what Madre said and say we are not against development, we are just against this type of development. The zoning should remain quiet office space, just as the agreement said and as we relied upon from statements from Deltec Timber. And because the quiet office space is compatible with the Chanel master plan and the current use in the areas surrounding Track Seventy-Five, which the Chanel master plan is this colored map that you have in your packet and you all have packets that we handed out to help you with your decision. And this is from the Chanel Properties website. We relied upon representations of Chanel Properties, AKA Deltec Timber, when purchasing our home only eight months ago. Before purchasing our house, my husband and our realtor spoke with Michelle Sanders from Chanel Properties to determine the future plans for the green space behind our home. She reassured us that this property included a green space buffer of one hundred and fifty feet with property zoned for quiet office space, which is Track Seventy-Five behind it. Prior to buying our house, I also looked on the Chanel Properties website at this map of the Chanel master plan, which shows clearly that Track Seventy-Five is zoned office. Seven months after we bought our property, we received notice that Deltec Timber plans to rezone Track Seventy-Five to add a large three-story apartment complex with one hundred and thirty families living in it and one hundred and sixty-five parking spaces so close behind our house. We never would have bought our home had we known that a multifamily complex towering over our house would be, would be built behind us. As a mom, privacy and safety of my children is most important, so we looked two years for a Chanel home which would meet these needs. Our house has floor-to-ceiling windows across most of the backside of it. If an apartment complex is built behind us, when a hundred and thirty residents, especially from the second and third floors, their visitors and apartment complex employees would have a direct view into our house and the houses of our neighbors twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week through the same windows that enticed us to buy the house and also into our backyard where our children play. These same residents, visitors, and staff could walk mere feet from their residence through a wooded path in the cover of night into our backyard and into our home. This is not what we bargained for, what we relied upon when we bought our home. Our neighbors have very similar stories. The proposed buffer space of evergreen saplings does not protect our privacy because they would take fifteen or more years to grow to a height that would provide any privacy buffer at all, at which time the twenty-one children in our neighborhood would be grown and out of the house. Even when full grown, these evergreen trees would not provide enough of a buffer to prevent second and third floor residents of the proposed apartment complex from looking into our homes. Quiet office space would only be in operation during the day, Monday through Friday, but a multifamily apartment complex would operate seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And that was not taken into account in this traffic plan that was shown. It didn't show the night hours of what's going to be occurring versus the quiet office space. The, this use of Track Seventy-Five is incompatible with the uses in the area and this Chanel land use master plan, which clearly shows that Track Seventy-Five is, is dedicated to office space. Surrounding Track Seventy-Five are single-family homes like our neighborhood and office space on St. Vincent Way. Multifamily apartments with high-density populations providing noise, reduced privacy, lighting, and safety concerns twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week is totally inconsistent with the quiet, single-family homes and low-density office space surrounding Track Seventy-Five. This multifamily high-rise is not needed because there are many other existing multifamily residential complexes and acres upon acres in Chanel, which are already zoned for or could be easily be, be rezoned to multifamily residential that are not so close to single-family residential homes as this proposed complex. Little Rock residents should be able to rely upon zoning laws without fear of continual rezoning to suit Deltec Timber's profit and whoever decides they want to buy certain property in Little Rock. Little Rock residents should be able to rely upon Deltec Timber's promises, representations, and agreements when making decisions to buy property. For all of the stated reasons, as well as the reasons of the other speakers, I ask you, the commission members, to vote no to the rezoning of Track Seventy-Five. And if we happen to receive an unfavorable decision, we do plan to appeal to the board of directors. I believe that needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acock. Kirk Grinwald, please.
Commissioners, Chairman Berry, thank you. Real quickly, I just want to bring up one particular concerning point for us, and that's the light and noise pollution that this building would bring as opposed to the quiet office development. My wife and I bought our home on Witry Court also in reliance on the agreed understanding or the understood agreement that this would be a quiet office development in the adjacent tract to, to our subdivision. As far as the light develop, the, the light pollution goes with a single, large building, I'm concerned that the light by definition is going to have to be along the periphery there by being the closest to our homes that they possibly could be. As was mentioned, a lot of our residents in our green area are under the age of twelve and the, the better they can rest, the, the better we parents live. Noise pollution as well. Kyla brought up a very good point as far as the nighttime traffic. Shift changes, employees, not everybody that's going to be in and out of this building is eighty years old. Additionally, the emergency responses that go on in senior centers is going to be much higher frequency than, of course, something like quiet office development would be an estimated eight to ten per week. And the hours at which they come are not, of course, eight to five. Heart attacks most often happen between three A M. and, three A M. and eight, and six A M. And as one of those emergency entrances are noted there on the far west end closest to our homes, I expect there'd be considerable disturbance. For those of us who don't have eight to five type hours, if I were to come home from surgery at two o'clock in the morning, have a limited number of hours facing a full workday the next day, to be interrupted a couple of times by ambulances or fire trucks would be extremely disturbing, not only affecting me and my family, but the people I treat the following day, my ability to complete my tasks as well. And that goes not just for me, but all of the families, of course, up and down Witry and in the neighborhood. Obviously sirens don't limit themselves to just a couple hundred feet. So we have considerable concerns with the, the light and noise, so we ask that you uphold the agreement that we have with Deltec Timber and oppose the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Elijah Bolan?
Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman Berry. Appreciate you allowing us to speak today. So again, my name is Elijah Bolan. I live at twelve Witry Court, which is right at the corner there, the very top of Witry Court. And I live there with my wife and our three kids. We have a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a fifteen-month-old and we've shameless, shamelessly splashed them in the packets that we gave to you all. There are pictures in there. So we, we obviously oppose this rezoning. There's a lot of emotions here, okay? I'm a pediatric cardiologist at Children's. I do emotions all the time. And so I, I feel like one of the things that helps me when I'm sorting through my own emotions is to talk about facts and I, I just want to tick off a couple of quick facts for you all in regards to all of this. Number one, when we bought our house two and a half years ago at twelve Witry Court, we bought it with the understanding that there was an agreement between Deltec and Witry Court that this area would remain as a quiet office space. And look, I get it, this is complicated, zoning is complicated. We felt like we did our due diligence in going to our representatives and to Chanel and asking what's gonna happen, what could happen to this place, to this tract. It is a simple question, a complicated answer, but look, I do this every day, you know? I get complicated questions and you have to try to give a straightforward answer. We really feel like we did not get a straightforward answer here. Back to number two, we are surrounded by a hundred-year floodplain and much of this property will be developed on a hundred-year floodplain. We have lots of sitting water around our house and we put that in your packets as And there's a lot of trees down around our property. And as I understand, Deltec Timber owns all of this open space. That's great, it's their property. But in terms of them being a neighbor to us, they have not been a great neighbor because these trees have laid on the land and a lot of cases have infringed on our properties when they've fallen. So we, we already don't trust Deltec Timber to be a good neighbor and when we, we hear about a rezoning like this, it makes us think even less that we should be able to trust them. Third point, last point, last fact, is that, so I did a calculation, a kind of back-of-the-envelope calculation. Our Witry Court has about six people per acre when you include all of our kids running around. This rezoning, this development, the proposed development, would have a, a population density of around thirty-five people per acre is how, is how I came out, is what I calculated it out to. This is inconsistent with the neighborhood that we thought we were moving into, okay? The, the scale and the intensity of this proposed land, for this proposed land, it's, it's inappropriate. This is not a residential scale property. This is not a residential scale proposal. The three stories are gonna be looking, they're, the, one of the walls of this proposed complex is going to be looking directly into my daughter's room. She's three years old. I plan for her to be in that room for the next fifteen years. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of it. The other thing is the traffic and I, I understand that some traffic studies have been done. I, I question, I don't question the veracity of the traffic study, but you do have to call into question whether there is a conflict of interest in doing those traffic studies. Mr. Daters has appropriately paid the engineers to tell us how much traffic there's gonna be. The traffic engineer's going to be incentivized to tell us that there is less traffic there. We can't get away with doing that in medicine. We have to do data, we have to produce data dispassionately. So I, I am not inclined to believe those traffic studies. Dr. Grinwald talked about the ambulances, our concerns about those. There's gonna be trash that we can see. We've canvassed, we've petitioned, people were very interested in this all, all throughout Chanel and you've seen that in your petitions in the packets. Last thing, we don't, we don't oppose development here, we oppose this type of development. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mrs. Lauren.
That's okay, I wanted to thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, the applicant, would you like to get up and address some of these issues raised, please?
Tim, where's Bob? Come on up here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say this first, we take very seriously, Deltec takes very seriously, the comments of its neighbors. And if you look back over the history of this property, you will find that what's happened over here in this area is reflective of that. Now, I didn't have a copy of what my friend Sarah Beth McReynolds passed out to you and I call her friend because she is. But I'm gonna pass out to you a copy of the agreement that has been talked about from two thousand and eight. I highlighted the portions for you. Two thousand and eight. But I think, I just want to clarify some things. I don't want to bore you with details, but, but I, I do think this is important, particularly from the standpoint of what was agreed to, what was done in two thousand and eight and what wasn't done in two thousand and nine. First of all, this agreement was, first of all, this agreement was between, oh, I'm sorry, I am so sorry.
Mr. Spivey, I'm, I'm getting very uncomfortable with the, the discussions on the agreement. As you're aware.
I've got a chance to have my say.
I know, but first of all, on, I'm gonna talk to the commissioners. On bills of assurance and property owner associations, you're not controlled by them. You can consider them. Secondly, I don't, I'm very uncomfortable with you, given your interpretation of a legal document.
I'm not gonna give interpretation of anything. I promise you. It's there for them to.
And this is only for y'all's, y'all, y'all do not have to consider this agreement?
They bring it up?
They did, but this is a civil matter.
Okay.
What, what I would have said, and not to interrupt, Sean.
Right. But this is strictly a civil matter between you.
And my point was the city and the next thing I was gonna say was the city's not a party to this agreement. It's not binding on you, doesn't have anything to do with the actions that have been taken or will be taken or won't be taken by the city. No, I, I think that's absolutely correct. But several times throughout the preceding presentations, it's been said that Deltec agreed to this, 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 and this. Now, you can read this agreement for yourself and see what it says Deltec agreed to. When this matter came up in two thousand and eight, it had absolutely nothing to do with the zoning on this piece of property. This came up in connection with a site that you see on the screen, which is also an exhibit to this agreement, that was zoned multifamily.
That's, we can, can we move on a little?
I'm sorry.
Yes, we can. We need to.
Okay. Nevertheless, please, the agreement speaks for itself. In two thousand and ten, when the P O D was approved, in connection with the presentations at the request of staff, there was an agreement, just as there is here, that additional landscaping would be placed in the fifty-foot otherwise undisturbed buffer. The agreement says it's a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer. And had that P O D been built, gone forward, there would have been, just as there will be here. So in that respect, I want to correct the record and make sure that the chronology is clear as to what was done when and what agreements were made. Very quickly, fifty-five and over is a federal designation. Mr. Lewis's company is very familiar with it. He understands that there are very strict rules. You all have previously approved properties that are fifty-five and older. The villa's at Chanel, one that's being developed by Mr. Crane. This is not something that's unfamiliar to the commission. There are very strictly enforced rules that go along with that. Now, what generally happens, and I think you heard Mr. Lewis say this earlier, is that the average age is generally older. I wouldn't take issue with what Mr. Hill said. It's always possible that he could move in there as a caregiver for an ill or aged parent. No argument. But in practice, that's not what happens. It's senior housing, it's quiet senior housing, it's not open-ended unrestricted multifamily. As far as light and noise, I want to defer very quickly to Mr. Daters, who will talk to you about what will be done as far as lighting. to you about what will be done as far as lighting and noise.
Thank you, Bill. Walter, could you go back to the landscape plan, go back two or three things on our presentation? Go back two or three slides. One more, one more. There. As you can see from the plan, along the western portion of the project, separating the project from the buffer area, our garages, they're outlined there in the brown structures. Those things will have lighting only on the side facing the larger structure. There will not be any lighting on the rear of the garages at all. There will be, by code, some lighting on the building, because you're required to have lighting on the building. That will all be directed downward and towards the site. All the lighting fixtures on the site will be low-lighting fixtures. Their heights are typically around 20 feet, and all that lighting will be directed downward towards the site. If you can look at this particular drawing, the house split you see at the end of the cul-de-sac, if you'll point to that, Walter, the one at the end of the cul-de-sac, right there, that house is about 300 feet from the face of the residence building here on this project. In other words, you go across 25 feet of yard adjacent to their house. You go across 150 feet of buffer. You go across 25 feet of garage, 25 feet of driveway, 35 feet of landscaping adjacent to the building, and you're somewhere around 290 to 300 feet from separation between the two structures. You know, of that, 150 feet is mature forest. It's going to remain mature. We're going to supplement it with some understored plantings.
Thank you. I'll let Mr. Peters speak for himself as far as the independence of his reports. He's here often. He's a credible source. He may not want to speak to you. I don't know if he wants to say anything, but the reality is, his... Well, I'll let him talk.
Thank you, Mrs. Spivey. I don't feel like I need to say anything. You folks know me. I've been here for 20, 30 years, and we are professional in what we do. We're not going to twist the facts in any way. And we've simply done a simple comparative analysis of one land use versus another and the traffic associated with it. I would hesitate to go to this pediatric cardiologist with a grandchild of mine, because I believe that he's professional, and I would hope that he would believe I am too. Thank you.
I'm going to let Mr. Lewis kind of close this out in just one second, but I would vigorously dispute any suggestion that there's been any fraud or misrepresentation. I would hope that if someone contacted Chanel Properties and said, "What's this zone?", they would say it's office, because it is. That's what it is. And this is a request to rezone it as a PRD with, as you know, substantial restrictions and limitations on what can go there. But to suggest that there has been fraud, or Deltic's violated an agreement that it had with Witchtree, as Mr. Overton says, separate matter, not binding on you all, but Deltic fully believes that if this weren't a better use for that site, a less intense use for that site, and one which would be less intrusive, they wouldn't be down here asking you to approve it. Mr. Lewis, would you like to close out with anything? He's good. Okay. Then let me close out and say thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it. I would ask your approval of the application before you. We'll be happy to answer any other questions that any member of the Commission or its staff may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spivey. Commissioners, comments and questions? Commissioner May?
Well, as you can tell, Mr. Leahy and I are very excited about any retirement community. We looked at those, and we might want to come out there and look at it. On that issue, though, with the city attorney's warning, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not near as smart as anybody that talked here. I was a banker, for God's sakes. It doesn't matter what is written. It's what the opinion was. And nothing bothers me more than a young couple buying a house with the opinion given them, right or wrong, maybe not meaning to mislead, but I also sold in my career, and you can fudge a little bit without telling a lie. And I don't believe they meant anything about any fraud going on. But I can't support this, because they bought those houses thinking one thing, regardless of what was written or what was understood, and I can't support this myself.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Hamilton?
It's just a couple of questions. I agree in previous Commissioners' comments. I think, you know, certainly, in any scenario, people make decisions. Certainly, buying a house is one of the largest, if not largest, decisions that anyone would make. And, you know, as you do your due diligence, make decisions about where you want to locate, reside, raise your children, what have you. I think anything that you can find out, you're going to rely on. And so, any change is going to create this type of concern. I'm 50. At 55, I think that's a fabulous place. I'd be checking it out, too. And if I could get my 17-year-old dog in there, I'd move in next week. But nonetheless, I think that this is something that I cannot support.
Commissioner Latour?
Well, I guess it's two to one. I won't say I support it, but I guess what I'm bothered about is if you don't get this, what do you get? So, is a quiet, upscale, residential, buffered, better than what you're going to get if you don't get it? And I think if you drive down to the bottom of Rawling Hill, you'll see what you get when you get... I mean, they oppose something. They got what they wished for. The original proposal didn't go in. I guess, my $64 question, this is what, and it's their stuff that they passed out. That's what it's proposed now. The zoning that's proposed before that you say is okay had 13 buildings on it, with no assurance that any of them are one-story, or two-story, or three-story. The current zoning allows for a taller building than what's even been proposed. So, but I appreciate that what we do here is going to be appealed either way to the City Board, but I think it's a relatively good use for the property.
Thank you. Commissioner Latour, Mr. Finney?
I'd just like to say, for the record, being a Realtor, I understand the neighbors' comments. I really appreciate the work that Mr. Spivey, Mr. Peters, Tim Daters, and I appreciate Deltic Timbers, Deltic Corporation. I don't think that they're trying to do anything fraudulent, and I really do like the project that they've proposed. But unfortunately, I won't be able to support it at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Leahy?
I don't know where to start. I support this project. And I think I was around here when Winter Tree was proposed and passed as a subdivision. And everybody around there that was living there at the time was down here complaining about what they were bringing in, all the noise and the traction and extra things like that. And if this Commission had followed their request, you wouldn't be in there. So, looking at that now, I don't quite understand quiet office, and y'all are talking about being in operation from seven or eight o'clock in the morning to four or five o'clock in the afternoon. When I was out working for other people, they had a free-choice time. You could come in any time of the day, as early as four o'clock in the morning, and work your eight hours and then go home. You could come in at two o'clock in the afternoon and work your eight hours and go home at 10:00. Now, I live next to people that are doing that now. I don't know whether they're working in a quiet office or not. I don't think so. But you don't ever get used to that. And I'm also in a fairly noisy area in them southwest Little Rock. I've got interstate and railroad tracks and things like that. You don't ever get used to all that. But I support this, because I think it's a good thing. And I'm like a fellow Commissioner here. It sounds real good to me. And I'm looking forward to possibly, if I could talk my wife into it, maybe moving in there one day, but she won't go. I can tell you that for sure.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Cox?
Well, certainly, I think this is a very admirable project, and I like the looks of it. And actually, you know, around Chanel Valley Drive, I've had a family member, lived for a number of years in Fox Ridge, which is also a very nice senior facility, which and obviously, there is a need for senior facilities like this. Of course, you've referenced Villa's at Chanel, also a very good setting. And we recently approved just off of Rawling over in the Wellington area, another, I guess it was going to be a assisted living facility also, just off of Rawling as well, just to the north of this. But that said, I do tend to agree, once again, with Commissioner May and Commissioner Hamilton, that looking at the neighbors who are being impacted based on relying on what they bought their house, that this was quiet office. And I guess I would say this is a great project that perhaps needs to be relocated to the north of the Chanel Parkway, or some other part of Chanel who's done a great job of building a community out there. But I just don't think this is an area I could support, the location of it. It's a good facility, just the wrong location, and would be opposed for that reason.
One last thing. Don't be too proud to go back and say, "This doesn't look bad", because like Commissioner Latour said, it could be worse. And I talked to one of you, I don't know who I talked to, that I told him that I would voice this, that I didn't like the idea of, I knew what y'all had thought you heard. Whether you heard it or not, that's always a debate. Like my wife tells me, I'm always wrong. And after 56 years, I'm beginning to believe it. But at any rate, look at this and listen to the folks. They're honest folks. And I know what y'all heard, but don't be too proud to go back and say, "You know, this is a better deal than a 12-story building that operates 24/7." And that could happen. So, look at your options before you just say this or nothing, you know?
Commissioner Bubas?
You know, Mr. Lewis, I'd like to say that we're, I would consider us a very pro-business Commission. You know, I think we try to look for ways to get things done. And for me personally, my, one of my guiding principles is freedom for the landowner. If you own the land, unless there's a reason that it doesn't fit, and that's why we have these guidelines, then we need to try to make it work. So, for me personally, I would, I'm not going to vote for you today, but I would really invite you. I love your project. I'd hope, and I'd encourage you to come back, find another spot where I guess you could push forward. But I just wanted to extend that to you. You know, I wanted to bring up a few points in why I don't think it's a good fit. While today, it is an age-restricted property, as we've seen, things can change, right? We're seeing office property getting changed to multifamily. So, for me, you know, like you guys, we've got young children. So, 10 years down the road, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, is it going to be opened up for well? Will they come back and they ask again for changing it and opening it up to a non-age-restricted property? And I think with that, or with the lack of enforcement, I think Madre pointed that up as well, if there's enforcement issues, if there's issues where there's a lot of children or young people, I think we're inviting trespass onto private property, because the park across the street is private. It's a private property. It's not open to that multifamily property. So, I think we have an enforcement problem there for the residents in the event that there's ever a lot of children there, where they're crossing the street for a trespass issue. So, as a city, how do we enforce that issue? Another issue that comes up, I think, would be the harm here financially. I think I saw in one of the letters, I have a stack of letters, that I never would have bought my home here if I would have known multifamily would have been right behind me. And I think that same idea would apply to future buyers. If I go to sell my home, instead of it being a half-million-dollar house, am I going to sell it now for 400, 350, with a multifamily right behind me, with all the concerns that maybe in the long run, it could be something else? So, I think there's significant potential for harm to the local residents, and potentially even in Bascom Place. Another factor here that I would say why it doesn't fit is the long-term potential development for this area. So, and what I'm getting by that, if you look at this road, it's a significant thoroughfare here. And if you look at the long-term planning maps, and again, that like, what do we say, Dana? Maybe 50 years down the road, 30 years down the road. But I think this is going to go to I-30, right, in the long run? So, and again, that's a long ways down the road. But if you look at this area even 10 years ago, I mean, it's a completely different area. So, and I've said this before in this Commission, right now, office, well, maybe a year ago, I think you see it picking up even today. Office was dead just a little bit ago. And I think you're starting to see the economy's changing. Things are turning, and economic forces are moving a little bit different. So, I think for the long-term impact of this site, being so close to residential and all of these other factors, if you look at the totality of these factors, with potential, this could be something office in the near future. I think I would, with all of that, I'd just say it's not the best fit for this property. But again, I would hope that you'd bring something else back, and we could approve yet another site. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to make a comment, indulge the prerogative of the Chair. As you can tell, we are actually a collegial bunch, and we like each other. Obviously, there'll be a split vote, but we care. Commission cares, staff cares, applicant cares, and y'all care. And we're just trying to navigate through this. And this is more likely to be going to the Board in some fashion on appeal from one of the parties. But it does concern me that we become a victim of our own nomenclature when we conjure up quiet office. What does that mean? Well, I understand, you know, if a Realtor says it's going to be quiet office, you think, "Oh, you know, I'll be an architect or a lawyer there." Well, no, actually, that was going to be a medical office, a very intensive medical office. And so, in conjuring up the idea of multifamily has all kinds of connotations I don't even want to talk about. It concerns me. Communities raise that as a bogeyman, because this is not multifamily. This is independent retirement. And the traffic, regardless of what you think about Ernie Peters' exact numbers, I think most concur. This generates less traffic overall than a regular multifamily. My last comment, if I can remember it, at my age, is alternate, as Commissioner Latour often refers to, and I usually agree with him, I do this time, is what are the alternative scenarios? This is not going to be a private park. If it reverts back to O2, which it is, and y'all say O2 is great. Well, you know, O2 includes a hospital, includes a school. How intensive traffic? How do you feel about having a school next to you? I don't think you'd like that. So, we're dealing with the lesser of evils, or whatever you want, the development scenarios. I will support this application. It's a transitional use. It's not fish or foul. It's not multifamily. It doesn't generate traffic. I think O2 is something you might not want to live with because of the potential uses by right that you wouldn't have any say-so in for a hearing, because it would revert back to O2, office two. So, with that in mind, I'd love to entertain a motion.
Yes. I move for the approval of item 11 with all staff recommendations and comments.
Motion's been made in second. Those approve of the motion as made of the application number 11, signify by raising your right hand. And those opposed? Application fails. Did you get the numbers on the votes? Okay. Four to five. Okay. Thank you very much for coming down and all your indulgence and everyone being civil. It's just, it makes me feel good, because I just came from a college campus, and it's, things are ugly. If we don't mind, we do need to clear out for another item and, and I'm glad we're all visiting, but we, we do need to move on. Thank you.
Are we ready for item number 17?
Thank you. Yes, please read item 17, please.
File number Z-9198, Breed Short Form PCD located at 5108 Baseline Road. The applicant is requesting rezoning from R2 Single Family to PCD Plan Commercial Development to allow the reuse of an existing building as a salon, also to provide wholesale beauty products. Within the existing building, approximately 75% of the floor area will be used for the salons and the remaining 25% to be used for wholesale products. The building contains 6,102 square feet of floor area. There are 11 parking spaces located along Baseline Road and 27 parking spaces located within the rear buil, of the building for a total of 38. The applicant notes the parking will be resurfaced to accommodate 43 vehicles. Parking for a salon is typically based on one parking space per 200 gross square feet of floor area. Parking for the retail is typically 1 to 300. So based on that, a total of 27 parking spaces would typically be required. The hours of operation for the salon are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Saturday. Sunday hours will be by appointment only. The applicant notes that the independent stylists set their own hours and so they will operate the, the salon and operate the hours as they choose, but the hours will be limited to 7 to 9. The applicant indicates signage will be placed on the awnings as well as the front facade of the building. A ground sign, the size of the ground sign and location has not been determined, but staff would recommend if signage is proposed that it be limited to 10 feet in height and 100 square feet in area. The site plan indicates the placement of future building within the rear portion of the lot. The building is proposed 8,000 to 10,000 square feet and is proposed solely as wholesale of beauty products. The plan indicates a paved area around the building. The applicant notes all new paved areas will be landscaped per the typical ordinance requirements. The hours of operation for the wholesale products, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday. The applicant notes that for the most part, the wholesale products are shipped out on very, only on occasion will a customer come to pick up orders at this location. Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request. Staff does support the reuse of the commercial building along Baseline Road for the salon and wholesale beauty products. Business staff does not, however, support the addition of the commercial building within the rear portion of the property. Adjacent to the area proposed with the new future construction, there are residential uses to the northeast and west. Staff feels the placement of the commercial within this area is premature based on the current residential uses in the area and feels the encroachment of the commercial activity is chipping away at the neighborhood. Staff recommends denial of the request as filed. And you did receive letters of support from the Windermere Baseline Neighborhood Association as well as a signed petition from some folks within that neighborhood as well.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here, please? Okay. We have two cards in opposition and the staff's recommendation, of course, you've heard. So you're welcome to. How special. Okay. So we have three cards in opposition. So you're welcome to state your case and also hold some time to address issues and, and concerns that have been raised by the opposition.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I, I appreciate this opportunity. We've already, you've already looked over what we're, we're suggesting. So I'm going to go to write to the, the one question. And please excuse my unfamiliarity with the process. So if I'm getting anything out of order, you, you can interrupt me at any time. Basically, as it was stated, we're looking at this property and we have already made the same presentation again to the Southwest Little Rock United for Progress Committee and the Windermere Neighborhood Association. And we've received in general support from the Windermere Group and I think unanimous support from, from the Southwest Little Rock United for Progress Group. Bottom line is, we, we are looking at this property and, and we hadn't even brought up the possibility of, of structure in the back. We did have a question about the property itself. It's almost two acres of land. I think it's 1.88 acre, acres of land. It's 600, over 600 feet deep. And with our investors, we are looking at purchasing this property and that back portion of the property is basically landlocked. So it doesn't give us much opportunity. You know, it, it is zone R2, but not many people are wanting, going to want to buy that property back there and build a house on it and have to drive through our commercial parking lot to get to their home. So there's not much value in that property otherwise. And, and we weren't even sure that we would ever develop it. But the commission did ask if there was any future plans and there's a possibility that sometime that we might want to put in a warehousing facility there. Now, if, if you, I don't, not sure which diagram it is, but the one that has the proposed warehouse on it, just quickly, we apologize again for the amateur nature of this. That's something I did. That wasn't done by an engineer. And that building is probably, or is possibly 40 to 50% bigger than what we would actually build. We would, but I, I wanted to give the worst-case scenario and, and present what it, it might be. That being said, the, the property is about 134 feet wide. And that, in the back of the property would hardly be visible from the street. It would have normal working hours. And with our warehousing, we would probably receive six to eight shipments per year. All right? And so that's when we would have that come in. And we would try to have, we hope to have UPS picking up orders daily. But that would be once in the afternoon when UPS ran. So the amount of traffic there would be fairly minimal. The only other traffic there would be for employees, which would be, you know, anywhere from four to eight. And I'm guessing, that's a, that's one of those PFA numbers plucked from air. But it would not be a large number. There is a possibility that we would include an educational center because our salon setup there is designed to give an upscale salon environment for individual business owners. We could have anywhere from 18 to, to possibly 26 or maybe a few more, depending on how our designer lays out the building of, of individual businesses in there. And we think that's a great opportunity and a, and a real upgrade for the community. The building will be gutted. It will be renovated inside and out. We're looking at giving a unifying look to the outside of the building. I think we gave you some pictures earlier, but it would be stucco is our plan to stucco it, put a nice awning on it. And most of the parking would be in the back of the building. The back of the building would be upgraded as well because most of the clients would be coming through the back of the building. So we want it to look nice for our client, for the, the business owners' clients to be coming in. So it, it's our intention to have a very upscale look because it means success to us. The same is true of any warehouse. This is not a high-traffic shipping warehouse with pallets and stacked up and 55-gallon drums laying around and that sort of thing. This is beauty supplies. All right? So it's, it's going to be something that, that we would want to, to make a, a very positive impact on the neighborhood for that. There should be no issues with, with noise pollution. It's, will be during the, the normal business hours. There might be some concern, quite frankly, with lighting because we want to have the property secure. So we would have at, at least motion detected lighting there so that, that it would be safe, particularly with the back part being so far away from the, the street. But if you look at the other layout that shows what the residences are around there, there are no really close residences except for a mobile home park on the east side. So it's, we feel that it would be, we would do nothing but add to the community. And that's our hope. You know, I, I, quite frankly, I, I lived in this community one summer when I was in college, working my way through college, I lived out on Baseline Road. And I remember what it was like then. It was, it was very cool then. It was, it was quite a, quite a development then. And that's what we want it to be now. So I'll, I'll hold any other time that I might have for questions or in response.
Thank you. Patricia Johnson, please.
Hi, I'm Patricia Johnson. I'm representing Evangelist Temple Church. And we're right across the street from this property. And our main concern was whether or not it would be detrimental to the community and to the outreach programs that we have in place now to help with the low-income families and children that exist. So we don't see any immediate threat, but the concern down the line, because we're trying to bring in the children, the, the, and even the homeless that are around in that area and trying to help to improve the community. And we don't want a, a big business boom. We've got enough problems with thefts and break-ins and what have you around the neighborhood that we are fighting against and trying to help to improve, working with the, the local authorities. So if it could remain kind of low-key so that we could actually continue to help the people with our outreach programs, then we wouldn't have any opposition. It's just the, the, the future probability of things being detrimental to the community that we were concerned with.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Our main fear was that it might end up being abandoned and being rezoned could end up a nightclub or a liquor store and something that would really be harmful to our efforts in the community.
Thank you. You didn't indicate for against, but I assume against Mr. Masood?
No, not against it.
Oh, okay.
Once again, with the Masood on behalf of Pam Adcock. On March 6, Southwest Little Rock up heard the applicant wishing for the redevelopment of the old Biddy Salon 5108 Baseline Road. Ms. Breed represented Nova Star Salon spoke great length regarding her plans to upgrade the existing building, interior, exterior, and parking lot. She included plans to build a warehouse-type building behind the existing building. A vote for the members, vote of the members present in favor of supporting Nova Star Salon was unanominous.
Okay. We're for it. Thank you for reporting on that. Appreciate that. And Ruth Bell?
I'm Ruth Bell with the League of Women Voters as alas, you all know too well. As I was listening to the previous speakers, I was struck by this is another version of the issue just agonized over a few minutes ago, number 11. You've got residents expressing concern, you've got some concern, you've got a business use that's going to come in and make things better. And I believe that they will work to make the building better and, and everything work very smoothly. The league's concern are the, the residential areas that about the back end. It's a long, rather narrow lot. And yes, it's so deep that it ends up being right there with residential areas backing up on it on three sides. And the mobile home facility is the closest one. And I actually have a perfectly nice college graduate granddaughter who lives in a mobile home in Alabama. And so I know people do live in mobile homes and they do live in home, mobile homes for more than a few weeks at a time. She's saving up enough money so she and her fiance can afford to get married. But, so, the long and short is you've got residents on three sides. And although it's landlocked from the residential end of it, it's, it's a commercial use that's going right back there, way back in amongst those residential uses. I am wondering a couple of things. One would be how imminent is building, the proposed building way at the back end of the lot?
Ruth, I'm sorry, Ms., but you need to address the, that question to the commission.
What was your question?
My question was, is this going to happen this week, next year, five years? I'm fine with what they're doing at the front. The league is fine with what they're doing at the front. It's the proposed building at the back where it would be surrounded by residential uses. That is the problem. If it wa, you know, if it was a, a PCD or if it were, you know, going to happen next year or in two or three years, it would be different. But to, you know, approve it with the fact that there might be another building in five or 10 or 15 or who knows, many years when the uses around it might be very different than they are now that we have problems with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I'm sure we'll have the applicant come up and address any questions like that.
Thank you. Regarding plans, again, as I said, we originally had no plans, but we were asked to project forward for the commission. And we knew that it would not ever be suitable for residential area without the possible buying of other properties to get access, either on Drayer Road or, or the other side. And then you, you still have development issues whether it's going to be a multifamily or divided into singular lots. So our, our thought was that it would make a, a good, possibly a good fit for us to have a warehouse there, which hopefully we'll grow into. Now, that's wishful thinking. You know, you know, from my lips to God's ears, do we need to build a building? Again, the building I, I drew in there is 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. That's on the, the excess side. We, you know, we're probably going to be, it, it would probably be around 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. And that's, again, a moralistic number. But the other thing that I'd, I'd point out is the, there's going to be a lot more traffic and, and activity associated with the portion that we've, we've got approval on. That building in the back would be a very low-activity center. That it's, it is going to be, you know, again, very few deliveries that we will get in as far as our orders. And we would have UPS pick up once, once a day, you know, for, for the most part. And the only other traffic would be in there would be employees. With the exception of possibly on, on some weekends, we might have educational programs in that facility if we, if we have an educational unit in it. So it's, to me, it, 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 it is about the only practical use of that property. Right now, that property is feral. It's, it's grown up. It's, it's, you know, in, in itself, it's a health hazard. I mean, you, you can have rats and snakes and lions and tigers and bears and all that stuff back there. And, and it, it could even burn, you know? So it, you know, there's a, there's, to me, developing it would be an improvement for the community and, and a logical step. And again, I hope we have that opportunity if, if, if our business is successful there. So. Oh, I, I didn't get specific on time, did I? The timing on that, you know, again, if it, probably no sooner than three years down the line, if it were to happen, would we, we do that? And again, we're, we're going to be building out our business. And again, we're, we're going to be building out our business. Our business plan is to cover the market in the distribution business from Memphis to Oklahoma City. So whether we provide a separate distribution point somewhere else is still to be determined. Again, that, it, there's, there's certain things about our, our plan that are not clear at this point. But for, for the time being, for, again, probably three years, two to three years anyway, you know, I'd be, I'd be thrilled if, if we grew that fast, that we needed to move out of that, that section. And then on the other side of that, if, if we move out of that section in the front part of the building, we will, we would try to lease that to a comparable business. In other words, you've got a beauty salon there, maybe an accessory store, or, you know, something that would be complimentary to a, a clothing boutique, or something of that effect.
Now you hear the real truth.
Well, did you submit a card?
Pardon me?
Did you submit?
Oh, I'm part of the applicant.
Oh, I see, I got, I got, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, it's hard for me to be quiet.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for considering our application. I just want to say just a couple of things to the, the temple church across the street. We are, we are people of faith ourselves, and so we get it and we appreciate...
You have to trust the commission.
Okay. And, you know, we, we definitely, our goal is to improve the community. I mean, one of the things that I'm very passionate about is to see growth in Southwest Little Rock. And there's few spots that have enough parking and, and, you know, street front. This is just ideal for what we want to do. Our partners, however, are going to expect that the parcel that we purchase is zoned consistently. So to have something that's zoned residential in the back and commercial in the front doesn't make sense. But we fully expect that, you know, any future building, we'd be back in front of you guys with a plan and work with you, and, and, you know, it, it would not be an eyesore. It would not be anything that this community wouldn't be completely proud of. I can promise you that. So I'm just inviting you guys to, to take a chance on us. I mean, we're, we're going to do the right thing, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners?
You're used to looking that way, because I sit over there, right? That's what it is. But, you know, I, I think this is a little bit different case with a residential property that is landlocked in the rear. You know, from what I've heard from the, the neighbors next door to the church, they're concerned about it being a nightclub or a liquor store primarily, and they want to make sure that doesn't happen. That's the, I can see the nod of the head, so I'm going to assume that that's correct. So for me, is it, is it residentially friendly is kind of the fit question here. So what, as far as your warehouse or your, I'm sorry, your wholesale facility that you have in the rear of this lot, 38, you've said that it's going to be very, you can come up, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, or both of you, I guess. You said you're going to have very minimal traffic there, maybe a delivery a day. I got a little bit confused on...
Okay, now, let me clarify that. So we would receive products, it's, you know, shampoos, conditioners, hair color, that sort of thing, probably six to eight deliveries a year.
A year?
That we would have a truck come in and bring us product.
And that would go into the wholesale facility and be stored there?
Stored there. And then we would have UPS pickups, and we'd have an office space in there, of course. And then, you know, occasionally you'll have a hairdresser that wants to come by and pick up their order because they don't want to pay a UPS charge. So, and these are licensed people, so this is...
Would they be picking that up from the, the building in the front, or from the wholesale facility in the rear?
Initially, from the building in the front, because we're going to have products there. And it's only licensed stylists, so it would not be a retail...
Are those deliveries going to be picked up, like, between 8:00 and 5:00? Or is there going to be anything in there?
Yes, no, UPS, 8:00 and 5:00.
It'll always be 8:00 to 5:00?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Generally, obviously, we want them to pick up late in the afternoon, so we have time to pick it and, and get the orders out as quickly as possible.
Right.
So generally, we'll, we'll request the latest pickup possible.
Right. But I, I think most residential owners are concerned about, and you just heard the last application, they're concerned about the evening traffic, traffic at night, things that are after hours. You're talking 8:00 to 5:00 traffic. Is that in the, I've got a question for staff. Is that in the application that their, the warehouse facility in the rear is limited to 8:00 to 5:00 traffic hours?
Yes.
It is? Okay, so it's a PCD with that. I just wanted to address their point, that it is a PCD, so if it was ever to want to be changed to a nightclub, liquor store, any of those kind of things, somebody had to come back, just like any property, and go through this whole process again. And we don't normally like those kinds of things right next to a church, so...
And, and that is our concern as well, is that if we don't move forward with this purchase, who will? Right? There was someone that the seller had entertained that was looking to buy the place, and I think they were just going to put a little spackle and spit and try to open it up. And we're looking at investing $350,000 to $400,000 in the renovation of this building.
And I think what you're saying is why Southwest Ups, which is very involved, supported this 100% with all of their members to...
End up a baseline.
End up a baseline, there we go, got, got to get that in there, I'm sorry. So 100% unanimous support because they want to see the growth in the area. So I'm going to support this application. I think it's, it's a great use. I'm glad to see that it's, we've got someone going to invest in the community in this area, and I'm excited about it, so I wish you all the best of luck.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Leahy?
I have a question, the staff. Did you recommend that they show this warehouse building on Lot 38 in this application?
We don't recommend anything. But one, since it is a PCD, that if you do not ask for it, you do not get it. So in the beginning, when people come in, we ask them if there are any future plans for any portions of the property.
Okay, I understand, I know the game.
Right, so it was a guess, you know, so...
And I want, the lady that talked about the being a nightclub in there, I, I think I could speak pretty firm on that. As long as Southwest Little Rock is in operation, there won't be a nightclub in there. Because we have run out, one that was down there in the old Napa building, they've kind of snooked it in there, so to speak, and we got rid of that dude. And I support this application. I think these folks are sincere, and I think they're going to do a good job. And whenever they want to build this other building, then, I guess they can now with it in this application, but I wouldn't have done that way, but that's their business. I'm going to support it. I think it'd be good for the community.
Commissioner O'Toole?
Given that you're going to spend $300,000, $500,000 down there in that neighborhood, number one, I commend you. Number two, given the lateness of the hour, I call the question.
Question's been called. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of item, where are we at? 17, with all staff recommendations and comments except that of denial.
Okay, we heard a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Application passes. Okay. Thank you all for coming. And we have another item to hear tonight, is, I believe it's item 19. Is that correct?
Item number 19, file number Z-4551-F. The Medina Institute revised short-form PCD located at 12123 Canis Road. Ordinance number 21260 adopted by the board on July the 12th, 2016, rezoned approximately 2.3 acres located on the southeast corner of Cherry Brook Drive and Canis Road from PCD in 03 to, to PCD. One parcel was undeveloped, and the other was an office warehouse. The Medina Institute proposed working to build a place for social, cultural, and spiritual needs. Upon receiving the zoning approval, the Medina Institute purchased the property and the adjacent vacant, vacant lot to use the site for office space for the adult and youth education, cooking classes, meditation workshops, community service, et cetera, et cetera. The large warehouse space was to propose as a multiple purpose room for food and fellowship as well as for worship service. The west lot was to be developed as a parking lot. As a condition of the approval, the applicant was to construct the Boundary Street improvements to Canis Road. Public Works comments related to the street improvements as noted in the Planning Commission write-up, May 17, 2016, were, "Canis Road is classified on the master street plan as a minor arterial. Dedication and right-of-way 45 feet from center line will be required. With site development, provide the design of the street conforming to the master street plan. Construct one-half street improvements to Canis Road, including five-foot sidewalk with the planned development. The new curb should be constructed as shown on the plan. The city of Little Rock is proposing Canis Road widening project to bid August of 2016." We kind of missed that, didn't we? "If a permit is issued for the proposed development prior to the bid date, the property owner is responsible to provide payment in lieu of construction of the required street improvements for the driveway apron. The applicant has indicated the dedication of right-of-way will be provided as requested. The applicant is seeking a waiver of the Boundary Street ordinance requirements for the improvements along Canis Road. Section 30-283E of the Little Rock Code of Ordinance states, 'When a public project is planned, construction of improvements or in lieu cash contribution shall be required until the day of bid opening for public improvements. On, or on or after the day of bid opening, the owner of the unplatted property abutting the project shall not be responsible for Boundary Street improvements unless planned improvements do not meet the master street plan requirements. City of Little Rock staff estimates the in lieu cash contribution would be between $60,000 and $80,000.'" Canis Road is scheduled for widening, and staff feels they're working to complete the right-of-way acquisition, after which time the project will be bid. Staff anticipates the bidding of Canis Road project will be no later than August of 2017. That's what we originally intended to put in there with 17 and not 16, even though we missed it by a year. "Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request for a waiver of Boundary Street ordinance improvements to Canis Road. The ordinance is very clear on the requirements for street improvements, and when a developer is no longer required to provide the improvements. Based on the fact the developer is moving forward with the grading permit and building permit renovation request prior to the city bidding, Canis Road project staff feels the developer should install the improvements as previously agreed and as required by city ordinance."
Okay, thank you. The applicant's here, please.
Does she have, if I understand what you just read, I'm sure she's going to tell us why she doesn't want to spend the money, but her choices are pay, pay the money and do, do the, do the work and move forward, or can she delay her project until after August?
Could you clarify what's really required here, please?
If, if they would wait until we got the bids open on Canis Road, they wouldn't have to do anything. Then they could apply for that building permit the day after and go to work, and they would be off the hook. But the ordinance is specific. It says that up till that date. And it, it's not up to staff to give away those kind of gifts, you know? We got the ordinance and...
Okay, would the applicant like to say anything, please?
Yes, sir. Firstly, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. Thank you to staff and chairperson and commissioners. I don't want to speak for long, because I know everybody wants to go home, so sorry about delaying this thing. So Medina Institute is a small church, if I may say. It's a church for Muslims. We call it mosque Islamic center. We do two kinds of work. We provide a spiritual place to our own congregation, which is very small. We started with seven people, now we have almost 50. And we also do interfaith work. We needed a place on Canis Road because that's, we, that's where we live, around that area. And we got that place last year, and we are very, very thankful to city and commission to facilitating the rezoning of the property for our use. Now, having said that, we have two kinds of use. The interfaith use that we have, we have been continuing to do it at different places. We have very good partners in the community. We have been working at St. Margaret's Episcopal Church, Second Presbyterian Church, Temple Bne Israel, and we have been able to do our programming there. But for our own worship needs, for our small Muslim congregation, we really need to use this property. And when we purchased this property last year, before purchasing the property, when we were doing our due diligence and when we learned about that we will get rezoned, another thing that we learned was that we have to do the street improvements, half street improvements, as Mike just mentioned. And being a small church, $60,000 to $80,000 is a whole lot of money for us, because we are totally community-supported, and it would take us a couple of years to raise that money. So we were not going to go ahead with that project. But when, then we also learned that if the city bids the project before we do our parking lot construction, the city would take care of all the half-street improvements, like it's doing for most of the properties on Canis. And the proposed date of bidding was August 2016, and it was really glad-tiding for us. So we delayed our closing from August till November, because we know administrative works goes up and down and things can delay, so it gave us good three months buffer. And, and we closed on November 18th, thinking and hoping that by that time, even if the city is delayed, they would have done the bidding, we would purchase the property, we would go in, make a parking lot, and start our worship services. But the bidding didn't happen in August, it didn't happen in September, October, November, December, January, February, March. Here we are, and now our situation is this, and this is what I just, I hope you all understand. So we want, we abide by the city laws and codes and ordinances. This is important for us, and because the city has been really good to us, too, and this is something everybody should do. The thing is that we have barely 33 parking lots on the property right now, which is not enough for our use. Once the Canis Road project starts, that 33 will be reduced to half, maybe 12 to 15 parking lots, which is like nothing even for office use. And we are happy to wait till the bidding happens in June, July, or August of this year. But our challenge is that the holy season for our community, for Muslims, is Ramadan, which is happening at the end of May, May of 2017. And when we purchased that property, we thought we have August, September, I mean, we had nine months before the holy season starts, and I'm sure, we're sure the city would do their bidding, and we would be able to purchase our parking lot, and they will do the half-street improvements. Now, we are so close to the holy season, and we really need a place to worship, because that's 30 days of intense worship and spiritual reflection that we cannot go to another church or temple to do. We need our own space. But it's not only about the spiritual season. Ramadan, which starts in May, it's also a season of giving for us. So you can call it, like in America, we do fundraising, it's our fundraising season. So if we miss Ramadan for worship, we can still worship at home, but if we miss Ramadan, we won't be able to generate our income stream or funds for the next whole year. So if we do not have a parking lot by May, not only we won't have, we won't be able to worship, we also won't be able to generate income for the next whole year. So we desperately need a parking lot by May. So basically, what I'm saying is that we will abide by whatever you all say. We already said that whatever city codes are, we have to abide by them. But the time has not been on our side. We have been waiting and waiting and waiting for city to bid. Unfortunately, we cannot control city's timeline, and unfortunately, we cannot control our own worship season's timeline. So what we are requesting is that if we wait another two months, the city would do it anyways. We won't have to pay any money, this $82,000 bill that we are given. But can the city, we humbly request, can the city just give us that two-month margin so we can do our construction two months prior to bidding and be ready for our holy season in May? And whatever city decides, I mean, I hope you all consider. I'm here to answer any questions. Whatever you all decide, we'll see what we can do about it, whether to appeal or not to appeal. I mean, I, I mean, it's a simple, clear case. Just ask me any questions, and I'm happy to answer. But I will say one, one more thing before I go. If we had known last year in July, when we got rezoned as an Islamic center and a community center, that the Canis Street, Street widening project would be delayed from July 2016 all the way to 2017, we would not have purchased this building, because that meant paying thousands and thousands of dollars, which we don't have in our pocket. We would have looked for another building at that time. So thank you so much for listening to me.
Okay, thank you. Staff, have anything? I saw you all conferring, I just wasn't sure if you want to add anything.
Yes, we did confer. We did confer a little bit. Just, just to clarify, though, we, we did give them a permit to build their parking lot, so they're going forward...
them a permit to build their parking lot, so they're going forward with their plan to, to have their uh Ramadan in May. Um, you know, the issue is, what is your recommendation of the board? Should they get a, a waiver of the street improvements or not? Uh, Vince is whispering in my ear too, that, you know, others have gone ahead and paid their fees, and we just use that cash in our construction account. You know, it's just, it's just a matter of what's your recommendation in this instant. Uh, part of the holdup too has been, we don't have all the right-of-way yet because a few uh landowners are holding out, and last I look, you haven't signed your easement yet either, ma'am. So, so uh certainly, though we intend to go forward, and we have tried in every way to accommodate them and to, to make sure that their plan would go forward, and we've also, you know, respectfully pointed out what the rules actually are.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Commissioners?
Do we have the right to make a recommendation?
That's, that's the effect of what our vote will be.
Yes. It, it'll go on to the board.
We will be voting on, on this way.
In America, we call this a catch twenty-two.
Commissioner Leahy.
Can you uh worship in the existing building? Is the existing building there now?
Yes, sir. There is a building there, but we don't have parking space there.
Okay. Uh, could you, the space is there now, but could you uh open up and go ahead and, and not miss out on all the important stuff to you without, the way it is now, without any permits or anything else? I don't know. That might make very good sense to you, but.
So, I mean, basically, we can't park more than thirty-three cars there. And as soon as we give right-of-way, and honestly, we have no problem with that. That's a part of our original rezoning, that we will give right-of-way, and we should. Then we will be reduced to fifteen parking, so we can't worship with fifteen parkings there, parking lots there. I mean, we can use the building once we have the occupancy permit, but as of what I understand from Department of Public Works, we will not get an occupancy permit unless we pay this eighty thou- eighty-two thousand dollars. And I understand, maybe others have paid, but Loews is right across from us. It's a multi-million dollar business. We are a small congregation. We, we pay ten, fifteen dollars weekly. So it's difficult for us to pay the same amount which others have paid. Uh, or others are waiting for bidding to start, so they don't have to pay.
Other commissioners? Commissioner O'Toole.
And I'll mispronounce it, but isn't there another Islamic thing across the street from you and maybe within a block or so?
Uh, no, there is an Islamic center on Anna Street.
I know. There's one on Canis.
There is another place of worship on Canis Street, but it's not an Islamic center. No, we, we wouldn't be allowed to go and worship there. It's a jam-
No, no. But my question, how close is that to you?
Oh, it's-
Is it across the street or?
It's not across. We are right across the street from Loews, where Loews is being built. But that place is called Jamathkana. It's for another minority.
I thought maybe you could use their parking, though.
No, no. It's, I don't know, maybe five hundred feet. It's less than a kilometer away. Yes, I have a mild problem.
Other commissioners?
I'm, this is-
Commissioner Bobas?
This is kinda difficult to, but I, I actually looked at this building. I should've bought it. And I know, if I remember, it's a multi-million dollar building, if I can't remember. And the, the construction, the parking lot, everything that's gonna go on in this building, as well as doing the parking lot, that building was built as a two-story building on the inside with warehouse on the left side, 'cause it was a textbook broker. They had an office that was split. So renovating this thing for a church, unless I'm, it's, it's not gonna be a, a cheap fix. Um, I'm doing a project in Bryant right now, and I just have to change out a concrete box and put in two pipes, and it's twenty thousand dollars. What I'm getting at is sixty grand in the scope of construction is not a lot of money for large projects like this. And I don't mean to sound insensitive, um, but I'm hearing you say one thing. It's a small congregation, and so in my mind, if it's a small congregation, then maybe we can fit in the parking that we have. If it's not a small congreg- so I, I think we have a duty here to the citizens of Little Rock to, in the event that this goes longer, and I, and I don't know, and maybe that's a question for staff, is how certain are we that these improvements are, everything's, we have no idea if the, if these improvements are gonna be done in a timely fashion? Or how do we, do we have any kind of way of knowing that? 'Cause I, as a commissioner, I don't wanna come in and vote for a waiver of this item if we don't have the road improvements done for- Right. It, to me, it's, then everyone else is gonna be asking for a waiver, and then we've got a problem with fairness across. It's just, to me, it's, this is difficult.
Mr. Hood, could you tell us the, the plans for the capital improvement there?
At this, at this exact location, uh, they were parking in the right-of-way before, so that's right. They're losing some parking, but it was already right-of-way. You know, it was already street improvements, and they were using it. Nobody said nothing because Canis hadn't been widened all the way. That's fine. Um, right at this location, it's not a significant widening. It doesn't go much beyond what's there today. Where you see that curb line, that's about what it is. It, because most of the widening at this location's gonna go on towards the low side, low side, and that's all been arranged. Uh, that's a part of sequencing. We're gonna build two new lanes and move over and take the old lanes out, and there, there's a lot of work going on. You ask when it's gonna happen.
Yes.
It, it should have already happened. Uh, what's lagging right now is there's a few property owners left, and I expect at this point, if we can't quickly come to an agreement, it's gonna go to condemnation to the city attorney's office. Uh, th- there's no question, this has to go to bid this year. I'm reluctant to give you a date, 'cause last time I put that out there, I got in trouble with that. But it will go to bid this year. It will.
Well, it sounds, I mean, it's March. The next meeting, I know we have one in April. Is it April twenty-seventh? Um, I'm not allowed to negotiate, but-
Well, they've already started construction, so waiting for construction's kinda over with now. The question before you is a waiver.
As, from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, she could potentially be up for condemnation. Is that correct? Because she hasn't given that yet.
Oh, I expect we'll come to an agreement on that.
Well, shouldn't that already be done before she comes to us today, asking for this? I mean, I would think that if I were coming to the city asking for a waiver of eighty thousand dollars worth of money, I would have already given up instead of asking for the money before I give up my, you know, to me, I would-
I can't really, I can't really answer that.
I, I would say this, as, with, with that in mind, I'm, I can't vote for this item. I would say that if it, how can I say this without negotiating? If it were deferred to the April twenty-seventh meeting, and that was given up, and we have more information about the right-of-ways, and all of the, other people that are giving them, or, or if they've already been condemned, and we know for certain that it's gonna happen within that amount of time, then I would be more apt to, to vote for that favorably at that time.
Um, any other, any other commissioners?
I'm gonna vote for it. And I'm, as you know, I've been down this road and negotiating right-of-way and stuff like that many, many times. And most people do not understand that process. And we've got, where we put on our surveys, the required dedication, show it on there, give them the legal description and all when we do the project to start with. But a lot of people do not understand that they're required to do that. So I would say this lady here falls in that uh category and-
Why couldn't she defer it and go ahead and give us that right-of-way, and then us come back and do it on April twenty-seventh meeting? And then we don't have to stick our necks out, is what I'm saying.
Okay, let's-
I got a tough neck, but that-
I, I don't wanna go down any rabbit holes. As, I mean, the, the motions, the mo- the, the considerations are not for deferral here. Um, and uh- Right. Any other commissioners like to say anything? I just wanna say, as chairman, I appreciate the circumstances you're in. All the players up and down Canis, Canis is a great concern to improve, and, and they're, they're kicking in to the kitty to pay for it. So we do have to consider fairness for others that, that have already paid. And I understand there's a timing issue, uh, just a very unfortunate uh, uh, set of events. But we do, we do uh need to talk about fairness. And so with that, I'll, I'll uh ask for a motion. The motion should be uh whether or not to, a motion to approve a waiver for uh, uh, boundary street improvements. In your case, it'd be kicking in money. So, so you need clarification on that?
I move for the approval of boundary street improvements.
You're, you're moving for, she's asking for a waiver, so we're really gonna vote on her, her asking for-
It wouldn't be staff recommendations. It would be the waiver.
Is that correct?
So I move for the approval of the waiver of boundary street improvements with all staff recommendation, except that of denial? No? Okay, erase the- I move for um approval of the waiver of boundary street improvements.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Hear a second? You hear the motion? Those approve of the waiver of the boundary street improvements, raise your hand. And those opposed? What's the vote here? So-
Four, five. The motion fails.
The motion fails. Your, your, your application for waiver is, yes, this'll go on to the city board.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Hey, thank you for your time. Uh, we're now open for citizen communication at the late hour. Harry Nun? Well, stand adjourned.